I'll look at you one more.
Alright, there it is. Don't need this round here.
I have a call being ordered. Just starting the local.
Okay, Mayor Minney.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Present.
Monahan.
Here.
Glanzer, here. Jones is absent with notice and Nelson will be a little bit late.
Alright, do we have the additions to the agenda or motion approved?
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. Call favor.
Aye.
Any vote? Alright, do we have motion approved amendments from nine three twenty nineteen?
So move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Call favor.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion approved, Nelson.
Same.
Alright, discussion. None? Vote, Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel? Yes, Brenneman?
Yes.
Can I get a moment for public comment on the agenda? Anybody from public on camera down there, please?
That was no visitors. Amy was uh, overboard.
Um, our season started May twenty-third right after the first aid school that evening. We had a great two thousand nineteen season. Our returning guards were Riley Danielson, Alyssa Anderson, and Rachel Edman. New guards this season were Jaxla Jardine, Ellie Anderson, Michaela Sickler, Morgan Edwards, and Grace Hoverson. Retraining manager was myself and assistant manager was Ms. Kayla Sterick. Riley Danielson, Alyssa Anderson, and Rachel Edman also served as assistant managers as well as lifeguards. Due to the nice weather, we sold two hundred thirty-six family classes, a hundred and three individual classes. Twenty pool parties were scheduled. The lifeguards had ten rescues and assisted in first aid ones. We have six daycare schedules for mornings and afternoons. So they kind of alternated between someone coming morning, someone coming afternoon just to split it because some daycares are getting so big. So I just prefer that I give them a morning with the twenty-five that we talked about a couple years ago. Scheduled basic cares have been awesome just because it helps manage the capacity and it just helps staff them so I know about how many. Well, we don't know how many people will come, but just to know how many daycares are coming, that helps me just to staff the guards. Barb, Tyler has also been a great help. She administered another training session. We usually do it right before the season starts just to give the guards practice before the season, especially for the new guards because, you know, you can do the training and the certification at MB, but it's just nice to kind of be ready when the season starts. She directed five drills throughout the season. Each drill was successful, some, you know, we just talked about it like if there is some of the newer guards, it was a little shaky, but we talked about it. She kind of went over things that they could have done better, you know, because some of them might not blow the whistle. They might jump in, but they're, they have to get that warning whistle, but you know, that's typical for new guards. This season, we offered two sessions again. First session was June tenth through the twentieth. Second session was July eighth through the eighteenth. Both were great sessions. July is always a better turnout just because it's warmer. Our season closed August nineteenth at five o'clock. Thank you to Angela Wu and all the city employees and city workers. Meal is just amazing. Without meal, I don't know what I'd do because anytime my chlorine or pH is low, I call him and he's up there right away. So I never have to really worry about the water panel if it's too high or too low. Our guards did awesome and I'm lucky we had more than, I think we only had three apply at the beginning and they advertised more, so we got actually seven more. So that was awesome because otherwise we'd have to probably minimize the hours and nobody wants to do that. Especially without the daycare schedule, it's nice to have those morning hours. So, um, thank you. Is there any questions, comments?
Trying to remember, did we make a change? I know we discussed it earlier in the year about, about what was required for training for the assistant managers or the lifeguard or something.
We have, well, the lifeguards all have to do a certification which includes their first aid.
Right.
And all the assistant managers. We did a online for the managers.
Yep.
I recommended that, which I've taken a couple of times. I just feel it's, you know, not as mandatory just because I've done it. It's more kind of for ones that have never managed and so, um, and I know Riley's taken it before, Michaela's taken it before. So I think it was just Rachel that had it taken. Like, you know, I usually go over everything that needs to go over and as long as all of them have their red cross first aid, that's the main thing that we want to be comfortable with if anything were to happen as far as, you know, somebody dying or hitting their head or, you know, a rescue. So that is our main focus. We know what to do there and everybody is required to have that every two years, so.
That worked out well.
Mm-hmm.
The only other question I had too was, I don't remember what time of the year we start advertising looking for lifeguards.
I think it's February, March, don't we?
February, March.
It's pretty early.
It's fairly early. We advertise a little.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
And I don't know if people aren't looking at that time. That's why we always kind of are short at the beginning, but.
I don't think a lot of them probably even think about until they get out of school and say, great, I gotta get a job now.
Yep.
No, and a lot of them aren't going to be honest because they're in so many activities.
Sure.
The activity, the mess is so awesome. We got two, Morgan Edwards and Grace came from Montrose, which helped a ton because my three youngest ones, the new ones, were all in basketball, softball, volleyball, and, and some of them are in dance, so luckily I had those two just at feeling because they, you know, college kids are awesome because they don't have anything.
Right.
You know, except that they're social life.
Right.
So, yeah, it turned out actually really good that we had more apply, so I'm hoping we get more next year. I know they talked about wanting a little perk and raise and I said, well, I'll see what I can do. I don't know. I know Tracy said, we're paid for in girls, so we'll see. We'll see how that goes, but other than that, they were, we had a great, I mean, they're all responsible. They all came on time. If they couldn't make it, they'd call, so I had no problems with our.
Sure.
And, um, some questions? Have we ever looked into WSI for any of ours versus paying MB to come out? I mean, would it ever?
We've talked about it. We talk about it about every year.
We talk about it every year and.
It's hard enough to find the lifeguards, let alone lifeguards that want to get that WSI certification on top of it.
Yeah.
That's not how it works.
And the problem is just schedule, having kids at this age just commit to two weeks of. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but for somebody that's a college kid or a high school kid to commit to every morning, you know, some of them have power. And I need somebody there, then you got them coming in at eight to guard or, or they have that hour, power hour. Then they have to stay for like, you know, lessons and then one o'clock they have to guard, you know? So it's just a long day and then if they stay till that night, which is eight thirty, and they get up at nine for cleaning, that's a twelve-hour day. And they're, you know, it's exhausting standing there watching, you know, it's mentally. So just trying to get somebody, they say, oh yeah, I want to do that, but when time comes to it, no, they, everybody wants off. They don't want to do two weeks. I mean, it's hard to just.
I think that one year I had to do a survey of all the lifeguards, saying who would be willing and what did we have, one?
One, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And it's hard to give that one to do it. And plus we need more than one guard. We need at least three, you know? And then they usually have aides that assist, you know, just because our numbers are so high. We need to get, you know, aides that help out. And when you have the minimum guards that we do, they'd be working almost every day and lawn hours. So that's why, I know, because I said, that's the money is just, that would be awesome if we could get WSI.
Yeah, like when I mentioned one was, we gave them a two dollar rate, like they got a two dollar on top of that if they were WSI certified too. So I was just curious, you know, if that would be in, if there was ever any interest, if there isn't that high.
Well, I know, and I said, we could, you know, ask again and see, but we'd have to tell them, you have to have, be committed to this. And they, and it wouldn't just be one or two. It'd have to be, because we need backups. What if they get sick? And then I need somebody, they're calling in, saying, well, I can't make it today. And then when you only have six or seven guards to call and they're all in activities and they got volleyball in the morning. It sounds great because I've thought of that every year we've talked about it and it's just too hard to get the commitment. We might get one or two, but to do the whole thing ourselves is.
Twelve-hour day preparing those kids for life as an entrepreneur.
That's great. That's, I don't know, it's hard for me to get them to this. Yeah, but.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thanks for all the work you put into that.
Absolutely. Thanks so much. Happy day.
Appreciate it. Alright, we have second reading ordinance six seventy-eight, or two thousand twenty appropriations. Second reading, no changes.
No, I just want first. Nope.
Do we have motion approved? Motion approved.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Here, we have a discussion. Hold on. Nelson?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Yeah. Reporters. Got Chief Schmacher?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Travis, I apologize, I was not able to hit Tracy's deadline to get it in your packet. I'll try and achieve it next month. I did not forget about that, so just wanted to make that clear.
No worries. I've been, I've been just about wearing my fingertips, I'll try and find it.
Recapping August here, we had a fairly busy August. We had thirty-four total calls, sixteen of those in Hartford for the month. Probably the big highlight, you probably saw on Facebook and wherever else when our structure fire coming up late last month. Luckily, we were able to get a fairly quick save and knock down even though there was some pretty extensive interior smoke and heat damage. Good thing about it, no injuries, no fatalities on that ones. From a training perspective, EMS, we had a fairly busy training month. We doubled up on training for the month. We had a normal training on obstetrics, ventilation, and oxygenation. Then we had a second training with the Sanford simulation truck out. And what that is, is a truck that literally has full-size lifelike mannequins that move, that bleed, that do a lot of things. It was a grant opportunity that Sanford provided to us, so we had some members got to spend about three hours working through, I'll say, real-life hands-on scenarios with that simulation. And with that, we went over trauma, overdose, and heart attack patients. On the fire side, we trained on transitional fire attack, hose advancement techniques, and firefighter down scenarios. Kind of what we had going in August here.
It was a busy August.
Very busy August, yeah.
The structure fire, you guys had, had some busy days and some accidents report too and all of that.
Yeah. So hasn't really slowed down since then.
Hasn't it?
No.
Well, thank you. Yeah, pass along all of our thanks for the things you guys all do. It's, uh, there's a lot.
How did your guys do Saturday? Was it a big turnoff?
Fairly good turnoff. I wasn't there. I had other obligations and then most of the staff ended up on our vehicle accident. So really want to publicly thank some of the family and spouses of some of our firefighters that stepped up to complete the event, so.
I thought it was great because it was, it was a good turnoff.
Yeah, but I, I think it was a good plan. I think, uh, as my committee talked with the other entities involved, I think it was very successful. We went and talked about timing out it a little bit, but I think getting all the entities of outside agencies involved, I think it was very successful.
Nice thing is with those, they usually catch on a little bit more every year. My first years, sometimes it's a little bit tougher. Any other questions? Alright.
Alright.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, we got the recreation report, Nate?
Hi, um, not a whole lot. Let's see, I did make it to a baseball meeting. It was very brief, but I was there and I got to a baseball meeting, so I just wanted to put that out there. Kind of give an update on what the sports and rec committee is up to and what I'm here for. Let's see. Sorry. Yeah, so the big thing going on is the Chase Days fundraiser. We have a start date for that, that's next Monday. It'll be at Blue Forty-two. It's a raffle-style fundraiser, basically, that is ongoing. I can explain it further, but I feel mostly you're fairly familiar with it. So anyways, it'll be every five to seven, um, at Blue, or every Monday from five to seven at Blue Forty-two. So I encourage you all to come out and support us. That'd be great with the draw, drawing at seven fifteen. And then also, we may have a couple of games here in Hartford for soccer this weekend. I've got some stuff in the works since we've had flooding at their parks in Sioux Falls, so that's, that's really the only thing to add on there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the report here. Any questions, further questions? Okay.
Worked with Dakota Lions soccer pool together under fourteen voltage team. What did that involve? How did that look?
So the situation with that was, it was mostly hard for kids, a couple Tri-Valley kids on that team. They had like nine sign up. So we worked together kind of between me, Dakota Alliance, and then one of the parents on the team to get a couple more kids. And I believe they're up to thirteen on the roster now, so they're able to play. I've heard they're not fairly competitive, but they have enough to play and that's the biggest thing, I think, for like a high school boys soccer team, continuing to establish it here without, you know, a school-regulated team, so.
Oh, it's boys team?
Yeah, it's boys team.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Alright, nothing else? Thank you, Nate?
Yep.
Alright. Got Chamber Economic Development report from Jesse.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Your packet is my report from the month of August. Any questions?
See, you've had some, some sign traction. Was it Natty Home just recently that just signed?
Yes, they, they were one of the award winners of the first round of France in April. And they had their, we had September one deadline on the installation of the signs and they made that. And so they are in their, within their footage and they're, they've got a lot of positive compliments on the new sign.
They can't miss that.
Can't miss it. That's true, unless you're colorblind.
Yes. Yes.
And even then, they need to do interesting color.
Yeah.
Well, it's good they had a good program. The, um, tour you had for the Development Foundation out at Sencast last week was, that was very impressive. That was, that was really good. If anybody ever gets a chance to get out there and see what they're doing, it's, uh,
I had no idea.
What they all have going on and how much they're really getting out there, so it was, it was good and well done.
And their expansion, I understand it'll be complete by the end of the year, will be able, will allow them to produce, gosh, what was it? Diamond real pipes? The worst they can do is about yay wide and the new pipes will be, what, a hundred and twenty picoines in the exact size, but big enough that they need thirty-ton cranes to lift them off of the manufacturing mechanism to transport them outside of the production area. Just huge, huge pipes.
Huge. Yeah, it's, um, all the cranes mounted to the ceiling and they're just going to come out of the slip forms and just, actually they'll move them in the forms and then pull them off. It's just, yeah, so.
Yeah, right here in Hartford. You have a chance, Carl and Matt would love to give you anybody a tour, even if it's just a one-on-one tour, just give yourself an extra half a mile of what you think because they're very passionate about their, what they do. Ask them too about how the pricing has changed since into the market. They've, what they've done for, for the, the pricing on precast is just amazing. Carl has all the information after how bid prices were this, quality was this, and since they came into the market, you know, pricing has gone down on precast. While the quality has increased mostly because of Sencast and his competitors can't keep up. And his, his emphasis on the new manufacturing too is, is just a very interesting viewpoint.
Yeah, that was my question, was maybe how far do they ship that product?
They go as far, they go North Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, South Dakota. I know they're looking at expanding their footprint more and more.
Sure.
They have, I think, was it two individuals dedicated to bidding projects? And at first they didn't do their own shipping until one of the competitors kind of made an arrangement with their shipping company so they could no longer do any, any shipments. They bought their own trucks and since then their pricing has gone down on transportation. And, I mean, at every step, Carl and Matt have been blocked by somebody. What they do is they, they get creative, they get innovative, they find a solution, which then makes their company even more profitable than it was before. And I have a chance, again, I would encourage you to talk to Carl and Matt at least once and it's just so interesting to talk to. And I'm sure Mitch, you've probably had plenty of conversations with Carl in the past and.
Yeah, they do good business, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, and the first week in October is Manufacturing Week, which the Chamber will be doing Manufacturing Month in October with this Discover Hartford series. We're doing, going to do a video, we're going to reach your central states and then Sencast, talk about manufacturing. Maybe do a tour of one of the businesses around the area as well that we could get it arranged. So I encourage you to support manufacturing the first week of October.
Can you tell us more about your involvement with the West Central teachers and staff and how you've educated those folks and showed them how to part for it? And how many people did that? How many new teachers were affected by that?
So Mr. Barry's been working together very closely since he first started to try to bridge the gap between the school and the community. We've involved the Chamber and the teachers and a lot of different organizations to get this ball rolling. One of the ways we've done that is to set up quarterly meetings or announce by annual speeches to the school board to tackle growth. So they're, so they understand what we're working on as far as the school is concerned, how our projects impact their growth and their strategy. They involve Justin, Ike, and I from the Development Foundation and their strategic planning sessions for last year, which started in October and concluded, I don't want to say in March of this year. They will be speaking to our board starting next week over a five-week span, talking with each one of their strategic initiatives. And their, of their five, first is finance. They want to get their balances, wanting their books balanced. They want to work really hard on getting the financial situation much healthier at the school. The second stapler, second goal is, is to prepare for growth, talk about planning, look at a facility, study, discuss some of those long-term strategic plans. And so what he had me do, he had me, well, not him, this was Sarah Weber, Sarah's our curriculum director. Sarah asked me to come and give a tour of Hartford to all the new hires. And so there was nine new teacher hires. We gave a tour on August fourteenth for the new hires during the timber golf tournaments, sat away for about an hour, talked about the different developments that are planned at Hartford, talked about what's happening, our growth rate, what to be prepared for. And I was told that if you need anything from the business community, please let me know. The next week, they had an all-staff meeting the day before school started and he had me speak on the city development, correct, not correct, growth. And really handle that message that, you know, Hartford's growing, we're here to be a partner with you rather than, you know, just one of your three communities. And I think we had a really great, great, a lot of great feedback from their presentation. Sarah Weber, who is, again, their curriculum director, she's been instrumental in getting this connection built up. One of their, one of their goals in their strategic initiatives is to build that connection with the community. Because in the past, there's just been this, there's been this divide between West Central and Hartford and Humboldt. And one of the things this administration wants to do is break down those barriers and really, really engage with the community and show the support for the businesses and the different organizations that are present here.
That's good. How many new teachers did West Central have this year?
They had nine on the tour that I gave.
But that's maybe not all inclusive.
Gotcha.
That's fair.
That's fair. Yeah, I think there will be a lot of retirements coming up here soon as well.
Switching gears a little bit, on the Hartford Area Development Foundation, I encourage everyone from the council even to take a look at picking a meeting that you can make it to on their Friday morning meetings. I've committed, Jesse, that I'm going to try to make it to the first meeting every month, which is their, is their business meeting. It's probably not the right term for it, but.
No, that's exactly what we refer to.
More business meeting. But more representation we can have with some of the things they have going on, their Hartford Investment Fund, different looks at different land acquisition and stuff like that. Council representation can be helpful in that, so even if you're looking at it, hey, once a month I can be there on the third, third week or the fourth week or the second week or the first week, doesn't matter. It's all helpful. Maybe, maybe I'll go on, so.
I'd second that, you know, instead of attending, just more get a better idea of the temperature of that group maybe. And, uh, it was interesting to look at it through the eyes of a member of the Development Foundation and then also give them some insight as to what that group looks like as a council member and also sometimes what it looks like as a community member, so. But you gotta, you gotta, you gotta go.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Alright, anything else?
Thank you.
Jesse? Alright, next we have, something new report?
Good evening, everyone. We've got packet or pull the packet. We've got two agenda items this year. I want to touch on the American Avenue. Just to give a quick update, they're out there doing the sidewalks and whatnot, they're going to try to get those done this week depending weather. They're hoping to have things wrapped up next week with Tom Sawyer and Seabrick and all that, you know, that stuff. Uh, next week they'll also start the work on Main Street. They'll be pouring that out and getting that prep and crowd. So with that, we've got a payout on the agenda. It's payout number five for work up to date.
Motion approved, payout number five. Second.
Discussion.
Jesse, you plan a grand opening for that road as well?
We've discussed it a little bit, but we don't have a date. We don't have a date yet, so it's hard to put something in the paint and then, and the books. Any, any thoughts Mitch on as to what that might be?
No, I think we'd do it towards the end of next week and actually.
Too soon.
What's that?
Too soon, too soon.
Too soon.
Oh, no.
Although I'd like to see it.
No, I'd like to see it open.
Well, even if it's not grand, grandly open, it'd be open, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I've been telling everybody they can drive it. They might still be working on Main Street a little bit, but I think the bulk of the American Avenue will be done in place, so.
Does work be on the twenty-seventh work for this council? Four P M on the twenty-seventh?
What day of the week is that?
It's Friday.
Are you supplying the beer, Travis?
I don't, yeah. I think we could do something.
Okay. Alright, we, we're going to keep that out there just kind of.
Twenty-seven.
I'm going to stick to the motion in a second we got out right now on the payout. Any other discussion on that? Monahan?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sounds good. And, so you got proposal for Night Street project?
No, question. If you remember at the last meeting, we talked about Night Street and, you know, at that time the contractor wasn't interested in providing pricing on the project. You know, after that meeting, that, that next day, they actually, at our coordination meeting, stated that they wanted to try to put something together. They have and submitted to us, but the pricing is just not where we thought it would be. This actually exceeds probably the bid standard. Um, this actually exceeds probably the bid standards that we, that allow us for accepting proposals of this nature. It has a lot to do with just their schedule this year and transit and work and their sub schedules. You know, through the course of this, we've been talking about them honoring their prices this year and, you know, and tactical is always to honor those prices. And, you know, once we have these, once we finally got them, obviously things have changed on there and where they couldn't honor uh some of those asphalt prices heading into next year. Um, gravel has been a, has been an item too that's getting, they're having issue with supply on that side right now. I pointed out a number of those things to me, and I think it really came down to just contractor schedule. You know, everybody right now at this stage of the game is trying to wrap up their own projects and can't bite off another project like this. So anyway, that's, I don't think the proposal's in your packet, but the, like I said, the numbers that we got just, we can, we can't even set them. Our recommendation at this stage would be to get this out on the streets and get a bid for next year's work.
Did we have anything, like on that Night Street piece, when we talked about them honoring you based on it, did we have anything, any sort of contract with them on that?
On the Night Street portion?
We didn't, no. We didn't let them, our original project doesn't alternate in fact.
No.
Yeah.
I remember that. We talked about that.
But it wasn't designed completely, was the biggest part of that?
No, and I told you I put together a schedule there and the report is kind of the schedule that I had for, for our design and whatnot. So, I have just questions regarding that. Like I said, I mean, on our end, we did everything we could to get the design done in their hands. And I think this year's just been nuts for contractors with all the, the weather and stuff. It's hard to tell what next year will even bring, but I think the best thing we can do with this project is get it out to bid as soon as we can. So I don't want to get it out to bid now because we're really not in that mode of bidding projects, but I think November would be a good time to put this out there and get people looking at it. I think we also have to look at the completion date for the project and try to give these guys as much time as we feel we can give them so that they can get their prices done.
I have a question in regards to Van de Mark and I'm gonna ask the council and you Mitch. Um, it was brought to my attention that there's an issue, and I didn't see it, but with the alignment of Van de Mark and the township road. Also, the wear and tear that township, township road took in this process of getting it, getting it done. Um, have you had a share, or any of you have any, any uh feedback on that? Or is there anything that's planned to be addressed in regards to alignment and the damage done to the road due to construction?
I mean, as, as far as the alignment goes, what I think they're probably referring to is, I don't know if you remember, but we had to get right away on.
I do very much. Did we get work around the manhole, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I remember that.
Uh, so if you continue north though, that right away doesn't exist on that, that west side again. So their road is, they only have right away on east side of that quarter line, that quarter section line, okay? The road is centered up with the quarter section line. Um, so when you approach that township road, it probably gives, it might give a little bit of a, might have a jog to it because it does, they don't have that right away on the west side.
Okay.
That's probably an alignment issue. Um, as far as the maintenance, I don't know if Drake's been looking at that.
So we, we were alter couple different times on it, uh, we put some oversize in that lower area, just to make sure we got trucks back and forth out of ducks and our own trucks out of there. Uh, hold some gravel there, we even mag watered it. Um, I was in contact with Greg Boggs, um, and I basically told him we have put more money than we wanted to in the road and that it's in better shape than what it was when we started with it and that we are basically gonna wash our hands of it, so.
Okay, you took the, did you take the mag water all the way to the north oil?
No, we went just past the farm, that last fireplace, Chucky.
Okay.
Myers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, yep, no, we stuck more into it than.
Now.
What they've done for twenty years, something like that, so.
I can attest to the fact there's more gravel on that road now than, than there was when, when the year started. But it hasn't seen a greater loss.
Yeah, needs to be related.
Doesn't, doesn't see the maintain.
And also I told Boggs, I said, we're, we're done with it, I said, it's your role, you guys need to take.
Good discussion. All right, anything else?
I don't have any else. And I, I, I don't think our website, I don't require an action of any sort of.
Right. No, I, I think, like I said, once we get closer to, I remember we'll bring it up and do you guys want to bid out the Night Street project?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to be proactive and say we put that on our first meeting in November to review um those documents and consider putting that up for bid at that time, yeah.
I know we should probably watch the market prices just in case we want to let it go for till January. Fuel prices go up, petroleum go, you know, pipes going up, everything else does. So I mean, we've bid it in November, prices are high, we're gonna be paying a lot more.
Right.
Than if we wait until January, so basically playing a stock market with it, but since it's ready, we can let it go and.
We'll look at it, that first meeting and decide, do we want to hold off or do we want to go ahead, so.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good, thanks Mitch. Craig.
Just hit on a few things, uh, Skidster is done, they just bought a loose connection behind one of the panels on electrical and that, so that's been worked even done. Just on Highway thirty eight, we've had some complaints or concerned, I guess, more with uh crashes on that sixty-five right next to Nicholson Road there. Um, I did contact Travis Dresson about a month ago, uh, they were gonna look into it. Um, and I contacted him last week again and he was gonna get back in this week. But uh, the person that, the regional guy for speed studies was on some leave, so he didn't know where they're at with it. He said, he'll, they'll get going on, get something done as quick as they can with it. Along with that, they are talking about um next year actually put some turning lanes in. They were looking at uh Colton Road, uh, Redwood area, and then also we thought Second Street was the other one, we had this conversation a while ago. And then I mentioned about Mickelson, they said, yeah, we'll add that to it too, so there will be hopefully turning lanes on those three roads, so that'll help with traffic, you're telling. Mosquitos will be spraying probably through October the way the weather's been and like that. Um, water, uh, we did get the waiver for asbestos, um, uh, that's good until twenty twenty-eight now, so. By that time, hopefully we'll have Sixth Street done up there and then we won't have to worry about it anymore, that's the last bit of asbestos pipe we have in town, so. So that'll be wrapped up. Water mains, uh, Metro Construction's working on the water main up there, they've got the first uh section in there, we just actually did a back T test on it today, so we'll see if the results are. Uh, if they come back clean, we'll grab one more sample, we always like to have two samples consecutively passed before we put it on our system, so. We'll make sure of that, that hopefully tomorrow we'll be able to take a second sample. That's about all I had, looks different to my port. I did get some traffic numbers off there, I finally got a chance to pull for Mickelson and Fighter. I'll just kind of touch on, I'll get this in your packet for next week, but um just average car speed on uh Fighter was twenty-three point seven, so four miles an hour over. Traffic counts on uh Fighter, uh, daily, weekdays was about seven hundred and ninety-six, weekends was four eighty-three. Mickelson Road, um, average speed was uh thirty-three point four, so everybody likes to drive that four miles an hour over. So, um, and then uh traffic counts on Mickelson during the weekdays was five oh three and three ninety-five on the weekends.
Where was that at?
Um, this was from Jacob's bus place there.
Yeah.
We had it just uh to the east of there, right at that uh future intersection.
Oh, sure.
Just before, before the curves there were, so we weren't slowing down for the curves or anything like that. I did find it kind of interesting that the average truck speed was forty-eight point five miles an hour on that road. So we'll have a chat with the deputies and start watching some of the construction trucks going through. So I did find that kind of interesting, that the trucks were driving fifteen miles an hour faster than the cars were. So, so I'll show the stuff to Phil and I'll get this in your packets the next meeting, so.
That's good information, thank you.
That's all I got, assuming you have something for me.
Just thinking about our budget, um, and the intersection of uh Route and Crestman Trail, or sorry, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Will that need to be, any, will there be any design work there, what's our, how's that proceed?
I think this project here will definitely want to have stock wells, especially if we're worried about them uh culverts moving on us, storms here, like that, I mean, if it was just complete, just a tear up and relay, then I'd, we'd just probably look at just hiring somebody or, you know, get quotes from different ones and having them. Throw some numbers out there, as long as you blow the uh bill limit, then you could, could have done it that way.
Sure.
Um, but I, this project, I think, is gonna be more than what we want to just trust contractors to come in and use their judgment on it, so.
Do they have anything there, well, yeah, probably do that off the force account, I suppose.
We actually, in that number, I think, we actually have our contingencies in there, yeah.
Does, did the road settle or did the culverts live or?
We are not sure yet, we're gonna, we gotta do some survey shots here to see what actually is going on there before making decisions. I think it might be a little bit of both myself.
Got to, I'm gonna circle back just a little bit to Mitch, and it was in the bills paid, that was regarding that Schwartzley drainage. Is there a resolution there or what's the solution?
Well, where we left at, you're supposed to build a berm on them, review the east end of that property line. And I think Paul's followed up with them with a letter just on code, code enforcement wise, I assume. And uh, I don't know, I've been try, I've been going by, I haven't seen anything done yet.
So this started a, a year ago, he was supposed to have gotten that berm up and Paul sent him a couple of letters and unfortunately, Paul kind of let it fall by the wayside and didn't follow up with it, which we should have.
Sure.
Um, but it fell off his radar and now that we're out at the mouth of this property, we've seen it's not there. So he followed up with another letter here about a month ago, his deadline was actually Sunday to get uh some kind of berm in there and he didn't do it. So we're gonna send out a fine, give him a shorter deadline, and then if he doesn't get something in place at that time, we'll consult our attorney. Because he's really had over a year, over a year to, to get this done, he's known about it because the two prior letters were a year ago. I think one was in February and one was in April, so he's had a year and a half to get this completed. So, yeah, so we're staying on topic.
All right, that's good, anything else for Craig? Karen, the second class your report?
Yeah, as usual, I have nothing to add, if you have questions, please. Straight forward.
Straight forward, no, I don't. I don't, I don't, you had the email that went out about uh, who's the deadline you got on that? No later than Monday, September sixteenth, which would have been yesterday, right?
Yesterday.
I already got back to you, but I hope we can announce it then, but it's too late, so.
So we have you and Craig attending the conference.
Sounds good. Sounds good, all right. Thanks Karen.
You bet.
All right, Teresa.
Nothing related to add, then what's on my report, I just want to let you know our, we did close on our tax bond for Van de Mark, because I'll tax bond today and we got the money wired to us, so we got that in our bank account. So when we do our supplemental appropriation coming up here, we'll make sure that gets into the credit fund, so we have all that funding in place for Van de Mark. Um, and then uh we did get the results of our wage compensation report that we had done from the Western Group. And so that information I did put in your Google box, i- it's under council information, so when you have time, you can look at it and kind of read through it. But I kind of just highlighted a few suggestions they had, but you know, it's something we can look at. Um, I was happy to see, you know, they reviewed all of our full-time, you know, employees or, or year-round employees. And I was happy to see we're kind of in the median range of, you know, what a similar position pays, so, which is good, that's where she said you want to be. You don't want to be on the low end, you don't want to be high end, but so we're right in that fifty percentile and it does give us, except for each position, that pay range. So we know kind of where a starting wage would be and where maximum wage would be, so. Um, like I said, all that information's in your box that you guys can look over some more and, you know, if you want to have further talks about it, we can, you know, go down the line. But I thought I'd just throw it in there and you guys can review it and kind of look through our suggestions and, you know, I think it'll be helpful when we get towards the end of the year and we are discussing employee wages and benefits and whatnot, so it was, I think it was a good thing to have done. Um, and then joint jurisdiction, um, to proceed forward with that, you know, of course, the, you know, the county wanted these public input meetings on the front side, you know, before letting us go ahead any further, so I talked with Plannin Zone a little bit about it. We're talking about um October twenty-ninth, having that meeting, hopefully. Um, we talked about maybe possibly the first meeting in October, but the board just thought that would be a little too soon because, you know, we, we want to review, you know, we're proposing to follow Del Rapids, you know, template, we want to be able to review that thoroughly so we can answer it. Any, you know, possible questions, you know, the public may have, so I give them a couple of meetings to, for us to go through it as, you know, just our group and kind of get familiar with it. And then it'll also give plenty of time to get it out there, you know, notify all the, you know, directly all the property owners that are within this area. I thought I would even, you know, when I sent in that letter to the property owners, put out on our website, here's the template we're looking at, you know, review it so, you know, they can have plenty of time to look at it and research it and come up with their questions about it, so that way, you know, everybody's in the know. I'd like the P and Z board to be there, I'd like this board to be there, I'd like the county commissioners to be there, so all the people involved with this can have a chance to kind of hear what, you know, being said and can kind of discuss it, so. Do we think that date will work for me?
For me?
As of now?
What time?
And then that's just a Tuesday night, so it, it would be like, you know, the second P and Z meeting night. We talked before, we probably won't hold it here, I'll see if I can try to line up the legion, you know, in case we have a, a big turnout or someplace to have it with it, but.
Are you gonna invite the county commissioners?
I'm gonna invite them, I think, yeah, I think.
I, I think so.
I would say, I, I think so, you know, each of them got a chance, they can come and hear what the public.
They were the one that killed it, absolutely, they should be there.
Right, so I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, so I, I want to invite them.
I think that was good, yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of our plan, so we'll kind of move forward with that.
What's the uh compensation benefit presentation, is that a PowerPoint here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I can't open it, it's on PowerPoint.
Oh, that may be, probably, we probably maybe don't have PowerPoint on these computers, so, yeah, it's kind of a, um, I can do hard copies to you guys.
Yeah.
Just go save it as. Oh, oh, yeah, I'll just do that, yeah, I'll just go back in and we save that as a PDF and then you guys. Yeah, I guess I never thought about, we didn't have PowerPoint on these computers, so.
All right, any questions for Teresa?
Did the county have a meeting last night or is that tonight?
Well, they, they meet during the day at nine o'clock and it's like the last one of the month, so I don't think it was this, I don't think it was this week, was it?
They meet every Tuesday at nine AM.
Oh, oh, I'm taking the P and Z, the planning for, they only meet.
Yeah, commissioners meet every Tuesday at nine.
Right, commissioner meet every Tuesday at nine, so. What happened?
Oh, I was just curious because I heard they were talking about something today and I don't think anybody knows where it was.
Oh.
You know what it is?
Your point, no.
No. It's related to Humboldt, though. But even in this town, nobody knows it. No, but I think it was that Humboldt. I'm not, it's still big, I mean, somebody can, somebody can do their own research and find out what it was.
They didn't really.
And you'll go.
They did it.
Call the county.
This was a movie, that would be what we refer to as Easter egg.
There's no commission meeting at seventeen.
I, I did, my, my suspicion is, is that when people talk about joint jurisdiction, whether it's, whether it's the city, there's definitely a reason why the city wants to be involved on the project, you know, and then the people that are in the county get all in a roar that, you know, why, why are people who are citizens worried about what's going on out of the country? But the thing about it is when something goes on out of the country, which is may or may not be going on right next to Humboldt, just about everybody but the person applying for it is gonna say, I don't want that. And they're gonna ask the city to help them fight it. It's a double-edged sword.
Uh huh, yeah.
Cause I'll tell you what, if, if it gets a. Cause I'll tell you what, if, if it gets a bit humble or outside of what they're talking about, it's gonna be a big deal.
I bet it doesn't involve hairball.
Sounds a humble.
Oh, you might be on to something.
Alright, we're gonna keep moving, that's for after the meeting.
We can all look up, look up a minute.
It's such a teacher for a day.
Thank you.
That's a teacher.
Alright, anything else?
No, that's all.
Well, that's cool. There, uh, there was no meeting.
It's on their commission meeting, it's on the planning, it's on the event date, so they can play it.
The P and Z one.
Yeah, P and Z, September twenty-third.
Oh, what is that?
It's on Monday, September twenty-third.
Oh, P and Z.
Is there P and Z?
Oh, yeah.
Probably be a zoning feature thing.
Good stuff. Maybe we should go. Alright, new business, discuss the Mickelson Road project. We've got confirm assessment, cost of the street utilities and sidewalk, you needed some confirmations as you're putting things in.
I, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So, our next step, now that we've got Mickelson Road, you know, substantial completion, we're gonna move ahead with the assessments. You know, we have some delayed assessments, we have some direct assessments on the sidewalks, and then we have, you know, agreements with the couple developers out there. So, you know, in order to keep that stuff moving, you know, get the payments to the city. Um, so basically with confirming the assessment costs, you know, our agreements, we know by resolution, the streets are a hundred dollars a foot. So, that's what's gonna be involved, that's what all our agreements are with our developers. Our agreements with our developers too are that they were gonna get charged whatever the actual, um, water cost was per foot and what actual the sewer cost was per acre, and Mitch has got to meet those figures. So, those agreements are basically between, um, John Jardine and Sam Assam. Since they've agreed to pay all those costs upfront, I'll be this week, um, I've, I've worked with Larry to draft a letter. We'll be sending them a letter asking for them to make the payments that they owe the city for their street, water and sewer. So, that's done. Um, the other portion of it is that we have Jacobsma and, um, Rose Stumpes landed us out of city limits. So, with those, we will have to, um, make a roll of what those properties owe on a delayed assessments, which means we will put this assessment against their property, but they won't owe anything until they actually annex into the city. So, we'll have, for those two properties, we'll have a delayed assessment for the street, a delayed assessment for the sewer, delayed assessment for the water. And so, those will come before you this coming month for you to, um, you know, approve. And then the last, the only direct assessment we have is just for the, the sidewalks that are the homeowners along Mickelson and between, you know, Patrick and before you get to Jacobsma's property, or actually before you get to Jardine's property. Their street, they don't get assessed anything for that because the developer, and it was, um, Kelly Point Partners at that time, put money in escrow account and paid those assessments, unfortunately, back when they were only forty-nine fifty a foot. But, we have that money, it's paid, so we just will transfer those escrow funds to it. So, the only thing to assess there is just the sidewalk to those property owners because they didn't have to put the sidewalk in until the street was improved and we just did it with our project at a lower cost, so. So, just confirming those amounts, um, we never really talked about the sidewalk. I was assuming probably that the sidewalk is gonna be the cost of what it was to put in, just like the water and sewer. But you guys do have the option of, you know, capping that as well or doing a lower cost if you want to. I mean, but I just need confirmation of, are we gonna do the actual cost of the sidewalk against it or are we gonna do a different amount? Mitch has told me that the sidewalk is twenty-two seventy-five a foot, linear foot, um, is what it came out to with the bid. So, we just need to decide, is that what we're going to assess the property owners or are we gonna cap it at some lower amount? Uh, because I do have to have that amount on the roll that I sent out and I've got to, you know, it's gotta be public notice. I've gotta send notice to all the property owners to come in and look at this roll. Any thoughts, any discussions?
We, what's our precedent there, what do we typically have?
So, I, the last time we did a sidewalk is when we did the other portion of Mickelson, um, you know, going in. And I ju, I kind of looked through the minutes, I couldn't see what, I don't know what the actual cost was back then, but what we assessed them was eleven dollars a foot. With it being kind of a, uh, even number like that, I'm assuming we capped it somewhere just cause, you know, you'd think it'd come out to eleven twenty-five or eleven thirty or something, so, but I can't confirm that, I, I don't remember.
I can look back and find out if that was the actual cost or not, make sure to do that.
We need to know, I, I need to.
One thing that I know is different from that project is we went to a standard five-foot wide sidewalk. Back then, the standard was four-foot wide, so it was probably four-foot sidewalks along Mickelson Road. That's where I should, these were five-foot wide sidewalks. So, that's probably a little bit of the difference in the.
So, that's an increased cost, plus the years.
It's probably pretty close to the eleven back then because like I said, that was quite a few years ago and roads went up quite a bit, there was one.
You're talking twelve years ago when that was last assessed, so.
Yeah, plus the traffic, it's gone. It's about a double year, so. Why didn't it be five foot? Uh, because it's an arterial road?
Uh, no, we actually changed.
We changed our standard, our standard. We used to have only a four-foot standard and now it's a five-foot, so.
Most standards are going to the five-foot just for the extra width or like wheelchair or something like that.
It's not because we're using the sidewalk.
Great. Alright, would you, are you looking for a couple of different motions on this?
Uh, this one, so, I would like a motion to confirm what the.
Yeah, cost of the street.
Costs.
To confirm what's out there and then decide on how that cost is on the sidewalk.
Right, right, okay.
Do we have any motions?
I think.
Do you want to say confirm assessment? What do you need?
So, basically, I just like a motion to confirm the, um, street assessment at a hundred dollars on your, on your foot, to confirm the water assessment at actual cost, to confirm the sewer's assessment at actual cost, and then to confirm the sidewalk assessment at actual cost if you want to do that.
So, someone.
Okay.
Alright, any discussion?
Not a discussion, but a comment.
Sure.
As a guy who went out and knocked on his neighbor's doors, convinced them to put in the new road, and it's gonna be a hundred bucks a linear foot, um, there's more, this is the rest of the story. So, I would venture to guess we're gonna see some customers, some customers, some citizens down here who aren't gonna be happy about what the actual amount is.
Well, this one's like mentioned something else, you've got some time on Van de Mark.
I agree, but.
I think you better keep it the same pretty much.
Well, yeah.
I say.
That, I mean, we probably had a different unit price on Van de Mark.
Okay.
On Mississauga, it will be different.
But if, if we keep the policy of the actual cost consistent, I mean, if it's the same thing on Mickelson, what the city's cost was. Like I said, and luckily, those homeowners along there, do you have, have any street assessment? You know, they may have that hundred dollars a foot because the developer paid that.
Sure.
So, I mean, they, on this one anyway.
How do we, uh, communicate this to those property owners, is there anything?
So, I've, I've. So, I've gotta send them, I'm sending each one of them an actual letter.
Gotcha.
With them, with a copy of this roll of what we're gonna assess, I, I gotta directly contact them. Invite them to the meeting, date and time, public area, and we're gonna, yeah, so they'll, they'll know what's going on.
I, I do have the unit price on Van de Mark, so when you pencil that out, five-foot wide, that's gonna be twenty-eight dollars with basically that assessment.
On Mickelson or just?
Van de Mark.
On Van?
Yeah, Van de Mark.
Call.
Let's go. Cale?
Yes.
Plinter? Nelson?
No.
Myan?
Yeah.
And Bremer?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, next up, confirm payment plan options, timeline and interest, does it matter?
Yeah, so this is kind of the same thing. We need to basically determine if we are going to offer, um, the people that have direct assessments, if they want to be able to go on a payment plan with the county or the city. Basically, you can have a payment plan one or a payment plan two. Payment plan one is where, um, we will tell them what the assessments will be, we'll send it to the county. The county will tack it on to basically assessment due with their taxes every year. Um, payment plan two is where we will just bill, that every year the city will bill these people for what to do that year. We've gotta take the payments, you know, we've gotta just keep track of all that. I think it's, we've always done the county plan just because, um, it's a lot easier to send it through that. When they send it out with the tax bill, you know, people know, they see it all at the same time, when they pay the taxes, they pay this assessment. Where, you know, they'll have to, doing it the other way where the city collects the money, you know, they'll get a tax bill, they'll have to pay that. Plus then, we're gonna send from the city another assessment bill to them and they'll have that one out there. Also, it's just less, it was more, less headaches, right, basically, I mean, you know, cause people that don't pay it, you know, then you've gotta assess penalties against that and then you gotta keep track of it also. Since I've been here, we've always gone through payment plan one with the county. Um, sidewalks were allowed that just people to stretch it out to five years. The last time we did it is that we put, we, we can put whatever interest rate we want on it. It's the last time, we, we stretched it out for the full five years and we put a seven percent interest rate on them. It's always kind of high because, you know, you want them to, you want to pay it upfront versus go on the payment plan because you, then we get our money sooner, but you can set that interest rate at whatever you want. But once again, I have to have that information to send to those people so they know. So, we need to decide, um, will payment plan one or two, whether the county or the city wants to select.
I'm gonna make a motion, you know, you're on the payment through county, like we have with that.
Perfect.
Second. You want a motion, a second discussion?
The good thing about that is, is that when it comes out on the Daxwell, if they escrow their taxes, they get a hundred, but says, hey, you don't have enough in escrow, so then they get upset one time, because they have to come up with the difference. But then the next year, it is, it's, it's escrowed in, if they have their taxes escrowed, they never see it again until it's paid off. And then, of course, it falls off and their house payment goes down.
Agreed. And have to have to get a bill from us annually just because.
Probably not.
Okay, any more discussion? Paul? Myan?
Yeah.
Bremer?
Yeah.
Cale?
Yes.
Plinter?
Yes.
Karen, what's the average interest rate the city is paying when we have to, we borrow money, the money we borrow, what's our average interest rate?
I would say three and a quarter, three, three and a quarter, so we're trying to be our average, so, yeah. I mean, being a city usually with SRF loans, well, now we can get pretty decent interest rates, so.
When was our last sidewalk assessment, many years ago?
Two thousand and seven, Mickelson one. And that was the five-year, seven percent, yeah.
Move that our sidewalk assessment via the six percent interest rate for five years. For a second, do you have any further clarification on that?
Nope.
The annual interest rate, six percent over, over five years.
That's annual link, no. And that's how it works?
Three seconds. Okay, one second. Motion fails. Any other motion?
I'm gonna make a motion, we set it at eight percent.
How many years? Or aren't you?
Is sidewalk three percent?
Yeah, is it just that for the sidewalk?
Five years.
Five years, eight percent, motion, we have a second. Here, none, motion fails.
Explain, better explain what we're talking about here.
So.
Sidewalk there.
So, the sidewalks, you know, they're gonna get assessed so much a linear foot. They can, then, once they get their assessment bill, they can pay whatever that dollar amount is in full right away to the city. But if they want to have a payment plan, if they want to be able to spread it out on our payment plans, just like a loan, um, you know, we can spread it out up to five years and then we can charge whatever interest rate we want to charge them for those five years.
It's the city fronting the money for someone else's sidewalk. It's the resident borrowing money from the city to put the sidewalk.
Counting, with who benefits, the property owner or the city?
But the city doesn't need to be in the business of loaning money. You can't, you can't borrow money to go to school for less than ten or eleven percent, and that's the thing. And, and they're setting the rate right now at three and a quarter, three.
Property owners don't put sidewalks in because they like to see their neighbors walk on their sidewalks and because they like to trim them and they like to move the snow off of them. Sidewalks are put in for the community to keep people off the streets and improve our safety. So, it's a city ordinance that requires it, so why do you want to hammer on one too hard?
It's for new development only, right?
The sidewalks are required?
Just new projects, we're gonna come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think eight percent's hammering them, I think, I think if you assess them, they pay the bill and it's done. They don't, they don't have to borrow money at eight percent. They can, they can take out, they can walk up to talk to Blair and borrow money against their whatever at a cheaper interest rate, fine. This is, this is, this is just an option. I don't think we have to be a, a more, a, a, a better-looking option than the bank. I don't think we need to be a better option than any other lending institution. That's, I, I think if we're gonna loan, literally loan taxpayer money to a resident, I don't, I don't know why we need to give them a gift.
If I can cover my sidewalk as safe route to school, the, the city's gonna front the whole bill.
Is your sidewalk as safe route?
Wait, just a minute, just a comment, just an observation. Given the fact that what I had previously in my instance was not a safe route to school, I wouldn't say adamantly that yes, I think my sidewalk could fall under that classification.
What's typical law likes out there, I mean, anybody in there?
Well, just for easy figuring, a hundred foot is.
They're, they're bigger lots, so I would say.
To be honest, these twenty-two hundred dollar, twenty-three hundred dollar loans, whether you're at six percent or eight percent, doesn't make a damn of the difference. Like, I mean, it's, you're talking.
An eighty-dollar real interest for a year or a hundred and seventy-five dollar real interest for a year.
That good? So, somebody wants to make a motion at seven percent to split it right down the middle, we can move on.
I was just gonna say, Travis said, we did the bike path out there, we did charge Creston's for your four-foot sidewalk and the city paid for the widening.
For the widening, oh, sure.
Right. It was because it was a bike crowd, it was safe.
Okay.
So, the city picked up.
So, maybe we only charge the residents for four foot. Just saying.
I'm so confused after all of this.
Well, if I understand it, yeah, I give what you're after, what's the total bill?
What are you, what part of confusion?
Okay. I thought this was going through the county on the assessment.
And, and we are, but when we send it to the county, we have to tell them how many years to put, and then at what interest rate. City can set that.
There's part B that I got lost on.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so, we do need to know these amounts so we can let the residents know that and before hearing, and then we can let the county know that.
And then the county.
Okay, so, so on.
Back to you.
Right, right.
On that note, Teresa, the, the street's not five, the street's ten, correct?
Yes, yeah, so when you have a street.
The street's ten.
You can go on a ten-year payment plan because, just because.
And that's between the county and the homeowner, right?
It, it, it's the same, you know, deal.
Well, the county's gonna collect four.
But, yeah, the county will collect it for, yeah.
And so, when they sell their house in three years, then what?
If the assessment follows the property. If, the assessment follows the property.
Yeah.
So, there'll be an assessment on the property.
Once it's sold, it becomes.
Right. Well, well, yeah, or, or a lot of times at closing, the title company will get that full assessment upfront and then we get our payment.
Alright, thank you. I would like clarification on that, this, this, uh, citizen of a hundred foot lot pays a hundred dollars a foot for the street assessment, correct?
Correct.
The citizen also pays, in the case of Mickelson Avenue, twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents for the sidewalk, times a hundred feet.
Correct, yep.
Okay, and then they also pay, um, let's see. The water, whatever the actual cost of the water is.
None of these do, because that was all put in by the developer and done, so.
Okay.
Mickelson, these ones that have the sidewalk will have no street assessment, they will have no water or sewer.
And on Van Mark, they won't either because they were already hooked up to water.
Okay.
The ones on the, on the east side.
No water or sewer.
Yeah, so on Van Mark, they're gonna have a street and a sidewalk like this.
So, the rest of the story is, oh, by the way, you gotta pay for a sidewalk.
The rest of the story is, you guys decided to add sidewalks, so you gotta pay for a sidewalk too, yeah. And you know, in essence, when they built their house, had the street been finished then, they would've had to put that sidewalk in themselves anyway. We just did it as part of our project, just cause quantity, we do it all at once, so. Had the street had already been done in there, they would've had to put that sidewalk in when they built their house, they just hadn't had to put it in until now and we done it. So, at one point or another, they would, it would've cost, would've been theirs.
Right, and they're probably getting a better deal, uh, when. Contractor pouring two thousand feet of sidewalk, then they would've, if they would've hired this way to come to work, a hundred foot sidewalk.
Yeah, exactly, so they're probably getting a break.
Okay, do you have any more questions?
I think this is, just throw it down. It's not a motion though.
Alright, I'll make a motion, seven percent, five years.
Do you have a second?
I'll save it.
Discussion? How much more going up, you guys said, where are we going to vote? Lian?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yeah.
Glazer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
No.
Alright, uh. Sorry, you've been late.
That's the best part of my day.
Boy, listen, there was a gavel.
Alright, do we have, do you have a suggestion for a public hearing date?
October fifteenth, cause actually we have to, you know, um, I've gotta put a notice in the paper and then I've gotta like send it out to the property owner, so. The soonest we can have is October fifteenth, um, we can set it later if we want, but October fifteenth would be the soonest one we can have.
Seven PM?
Seven, yeah.
Seven or whatever.
Seven oh five, actually, would be the typical one, so.
This was not a special, for you.
No, it's not a special meeting, it's a, it's a regular meeting, it's just our second meeting, but I.
It's good to meet.
I'm gonna. I just wanna confirm that date, so I can put that in the letter.
Make a motion, October fifteenth.
Second.
Discussion? Here none? Nelson?
Yes.
Brenner? Keel?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yeah.
And Lian?
Yeah.
Okay. And what I'll do now is I'll put together that assessment roll with all that information, send it out to the adjoining property owner. We'll have to have that public meeting here where you guys will look at that roll, verify it and approve it, and then once you approve it, we'll approve a resolution for the assessment. We can do it both in the same night, I've confirmed that with Larry, and then it gets sent to the county. The people that have direct assessments, like on the sidewalk, they have thirty days in which they can pay us upfront before it ever goes to the payment plan, so they get a chance to pay it in full if they want to.
Alright, next item up is to discuss the recreational program. We put this on here via an agenda item, so we would have a little bit of time to discuss, what does, um, what does this position look like in the future? What can we do with it? What can that be? All of those kinda things. Um, we have some money budgeted for next year and wanted to have a discussion on that, so. Basically, the first thing I'll open it up for is, is there, is there anything from the council, any suggestions from the council or anything like that that anybody would like to propose?
I'd like to propose table in here.
Second.
We have a motion, a second table, no discussion on it there, so we'll vote. Lian?
Yeah.
Brenner?
Yeah.
Keel?
No.
Glazer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Alright. Table passes. There wasn't, um, discussion about the time to table it too. I think what I'll do, um, just to kinda talk with the council is, Teresa and I talked a little bit about some, some ideas and suggestions. I assume your motion to table means you did it time with that, with one, unless you're. You know, you can talk about it right now, because you table it, but, um. Teresa and I talked a little bit about some ideas and we may just put that on future agenda, so. If you have suggestions, please, remember. Yeah. Okay. Alright, anything under course comments? Looking for a motion to go into executive session, personnel appeal?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
They did, yes. You get the site review, you get the site review or something.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
You want a back, Teresa?
I don't need a back, you wanna keep it for your boss.